Up everything.
Hey, Mike, I've got a question. Will we do the pledge? Is there a way that we can put the flag kind of on the screen or is that not possible?
Dave says not easily. We'll try to do what we can understand.
Maybe if you just bang your hand on the table or something, it'll keep that careful.
Well, just look into the mic and know that you're looking at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if everybody mutes except Mike, then you'll be seeing it.
That's right.
Abby's got a nice picture of it right now. I think she can do it tight. You're good. All right, we have 6:30 though, Scott, so you can...
Are we ready? Okay, let's call it to order. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 20th, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Education. Given the circumstances, there we don't have an audience. There is nobody out there with a phone that's going to interrupt the feed. So if you all please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody. Thank you. Let's move... Phil, if you could take a role, please.
President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Rousch is here. Treasurer Fidel. Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
And Member Lotterback.
Okay. So it looks like we've got six. Did I hear John or no?
John's there. We may not be having him well on audio, but he's here.
All right. I'm sorry. Do we confirm if John is present or not?
John is present.
Okay, great. Let's move into item number two, Request to Address the Board Regarding the Budget Workshop.
You have no audience except for our presenters tonight, so I think you're good.
Okay. Our presenters... So that moves us into item number three then, right, Mike? Board Discussion and Prioritization for the 2021 General Budget?
Yep. So this will be Brian. The presenters should present at the regular board meeting once we move into that.
All set? Ready to go?
Yes, you're all set, Brian.
Okay. All right, so click a few buttons here. Okay, we should be screen sharing now. Is it on everyone's screen?
Yep, I can see it, yes.
Okay, very good. Well, thanks, everyone, for coming to the Board meeting about a half hour early for the Budget Workshop. This is the first step in our official development of the 2020 budget. And the Budget Workshop really has a triple purpose to it. The first is we like to review the history of the MPS budget. We go back about a decade to give you a relative perspective on where we've been, where we're at now. We do like to bring you up to speed to remind you of where we are currently with the status. That is a little bit more difficult in our current situation to give you exact predictions, but we'll work it real close to try and figure out increased costs, revenues that are coming in that we didn't anticipate having before, and we'll talk about that when we get there. And then also, the final purpose is to start giving you some preliminary numbers for next year. And before I do get into real details, I do want to preface it with we are going to experience some difficulties in developing this year's budget and our projections for next year simply because of the unprecedented times that we're in. But we're going to do our best to give you our accurate prediction. We're going to paint different scenarios for you, and we will continue to keep you all updated and apprised of what our predictions are as we work through the various phases. So in terms of timeline, this is the third time I've talked to officially about budgets. We did a revision in January. We did a second revision in March. And I will pause there and let you know that we probably are going to repeat something similar next year. It's not looking like we are going to have numbers from the state for us to be able to reliably predict on in June. So we're probably going to have to do an earlier adjustment next year like we did in this current budget year as well. So expect an earlier revision next year again as well. This is our Budget Workshop. Like I said, our very first time that we're talking about the 2020 budget publicly. And we will bring to you our official proposal on the 8th of June. And when we come to the 22nd of June, that's when we'll ask you all to vote on it, and we will bring you the final budget revision for fiscal year '20 budget that has our projections on revenues and expenditures. So right now, two different things that we're working on, closing out this fiscal year and developing next fiscal year's budget. So as I said at the beginning, triple purpose. The first purpose is to talk about the history of MPS's budget. And we do go back a bit to try and give you a snapshot of where we have been and where we are currently. And I do want to spend a little bit more time on this slide than has been done in previous years because a fund balance is something that is very, very important to a district for a couple of reasons. One, it does prevent the need for cash flow borrowing purposes when you're not receiving state aid payments over the summer. And we have predicted where that low point is for us, and it's right about where we dip to our lowest point in fiscal year '15. It's right around that kind of 12% mark where if we didn't have a fund balance in that neighborhood where we'd have to borrow to make payroll, that's a position that you really like to avoid because you don't want to have to pay interest to be able to make payroll. Number two is it affords for capability to maintain programming when there is fiscal constraint. And I think that's something that is going to position MPS to be able to weather this storm. As you can see through the trends, we've had some good years in '16, '17, '18, '19 that we are in a very healthy position. It's going to allow us to be able to make strategic decisions that aren't done in panic, but gives us time to be able to really put some thought into what we think is the best move for us to make to keep MPS fiscally viable. And then also during the good times, when you're not in fiscal constraint, a fund balance will allow you to address the different priorities of the district, as you'll see in a couple of slides, things that we've done this year. So as of now, just a reminder, we're at a prediction of about a 25.5% fund balance of expenditures, around $22 million total. If you look at unassigned fund balance, that comes out to about 18.5% or 16.1 million. And in terms of operational costs, it's, in my opinion, much better to look at it not as a percentage of expenditures, but how many days can you operate the district? At our current expenditure line, we're at about 60 days of operation. But if we really had to tighten the belt, we could probably make that last a little bit longer, 80, 90 days if we really had to. While it sounds like a lot of money, when you really put it in that perspective, you know, 60, 70, 80 days doesn't get you through a school. So we're fortunate to be where we are because of some great decisions that we've made in the past, and the fund balance is there now just for the exact purposes that we have developed it for. This slide's going to be important as well, too, to tell a bit of a story. If you look at the past four years of fiscal operations in '15, '16, '16, '17, and so on, we have been very fortunate to be able to add some large sums to our fund balance. And again, that's going to help us weather the current situation that we're in. But we don't want to forget what history has told us here in MPS. We actually have only added to our fund balance in five of the last 12 years. And it was more often the case than not that we were adopting a deficit budget and then coming in with an audit change that was less than what we had predicted. And so as is the case for this fiscal year, we adopted a budget that was predicting expenditures at about $1.9 million beyond our revenues. And as we talked about at our last amendment, we do expect to come in right around balance, maybe even better, and we'll have better predictions for you in June of what that may look like, especially given the current circumstances. So it is not out of the ordinary to adopt deficit budgets. We've been fortunate in the past, but history has told us that our good run of fiscal standing is something that is more of an outlier than it was the norm. But again, very lucky for us to be in this situation that we are right now with the timing of everything. So why have we been fortunate? Why are we in the spot that we are now? And there's a couple of bullet points. And this actually is Bob Cooper's slide from last year that I stole and repeated because it does paint a good picture for us. Number one driver for us, always a student enrollment. And we have stabilized. You'll see in the next slide that I have a graph for you that we were on a steady decline for many years. And that decline has slowed, and we have very much stabilized our enrollment. And this year, we actually added to our enrollment. We've also been fortunate the past couple of years to see foundation allowance increases. I'd be remiss to say that I expect that next year. Actually, I'll think the exact opposite is coming to us, and we'll get there in a bit of time. But that has added to our ability to save the bond that our voters passed for us in 2015. Definitely has helped us with much needed improvements and helped our maintenance and operations budgets. And then when we were really restructuring the MPS budget to get to the position that we are now, we added a large number of new teachers and we had a large number of retirees. That is a short-term savings because at the beginning, when you have teachers that are veterans, at the end will be out. That's a higher number moving out. And when you have newer teachers coming in, that is definitely a short-term savings. But those teachers do move in steps, and they also move along the scale as well to an earning advanced degrees. And you start to see that compound on you, which you'll start seeing in our budgets as well, too. We've also had, for the final bullet point, some increasing grants coming from the state. And as you'll hear me predict a little bit later, we think that we are going to see some movement in the other direction on that as well, too. But these bullet points are the main reasons why here in MPS, we've been so fortunate the past couple of years to be able to add to our fund balance. I had talked about enrollment, and you can see our enrollment curve, and you can even see at the end a little bit of spike up in 2020. We've been fortunate to be able to stop that decline. And I'd like to point out as well, too, and give credit where credit is due on this, to the many innovative programs that we believe have led to the stabilization of this enrollment drop. According to our enrollment consultants, you'll see in a slide here, I'll advance, and then I'll come back to it, we were predicted to be at the very bottom, 7287, a decline of 78 students per year. That was predicted back in 1213. And you can see now that we are in the mid-7700s. And there are not more students being born than during our high points. We're simply capturing a higher percentage of that birth rate here in MPS. And that really has been due to a number of strategic decisions. Our offerings at the early stages, our preschool program, and then on the exact opposite end of the spectrum, programs like the PATHS program, we're keeping more students at the top end that may need alternative options as well. We think that adding those programs has helped us capture more of our population, which really does lead to fiscal viability. We are FTE-driven, and so we need to keep watching that and keep innovating to make sure that MPS remains the district of choice. We have worked with our enrollment consultant. We do have predictions for next year, and I'll talk about those a little bit later on in the presentation. This slide is one that I just alluded to briefly. We are fortunate that we are up students this year, and you can see in actual raw numbers that we were seeing declines from '08 through '14 in the hundreds. And you can see that in '15 through '19, we really stabilized those numbers. This chart also has some other facets to it as well, where it talks about changes of dollars as well, too. We are 1,222 kids from our high point in '08, '09. And you can see the fiscal impact that that's had in terms of correlation of FTE to actual students enrolled in Midland Public Schools as well, too. Current status now, kind of shifting into that mode. This State Bulletin 1014 is something that Mr. Cooper, Ms. Klein had presented to you all for a number of years. And to give you a context of what you're looking at, there's different color coding. On the far left, you'll see a blue color, so that represents the year '15, '16. All the way on the far right, you'll see highlighted in yellow, that represents the year '18, '19. So not this current fiscal year, but the year from before. This data was just released about a month and a half ago. And this is how we can present to you how we are spending our dollars in comparison to the other districts in the state of Michigan. So if you focus just on the yellow numbers, you'll see that there are 827 comparison districts for this data. And if you really want to boil down to the meat of this slide, in terms of total sources in revenues that we are gaining from the state, we are 296 out of 827. And I do want to point out something here. If you look at the history of that total source number, you'll see that we're starting to slowly increase. And this is the first time that we are out of the top third in the state of Michigan in terms of total revenues. This is largely attributed to what we refer to as the 2X formula, which means in real simple terms that when an increase comes from the state, historically, Midland Public Schools is getting half of what foundation districts are. And so as that 2X formula is applied, that means that the gap between the highest fund and the lowest fund districts continues to decrease. And so you see MPS moving more and more toward the middle. And so when different formulas are applied, and they're 2X formulas, we've even heard rumors that it could be a 2.5 or a 3X formula coming at us in the future, you'll see that number continuing to move. So in terms of our revenues in comparison to the state, we are slowly moving more toward the middle of pack. When we look at expenditures per pupil, we like to take a look at the very bottom right number, which is where we are in comparison to state in instructional salaries and benefits. If you are doing a longitudinal comparison and you look at the blue ranking in that number, which is '89, and you see where we are in '20, '03, that can largely be attributed to what I had talked about a couple of slides back, when we had a large turnover on our teacher ranks. When we had a large number of high-end salary teachers move out and low-end teacher salaries move in, that would directly affect their ranking, and you saw that happen in '15, '16, and '16, '17. Now, as we are moving with those teachers along the salary step scale and also the degrees that they attain, you're going to see that number starting to move back down. So '20, '03 does put us in the top 25% in the state, and I would anticipate that you're going to see that number moving back down into the hundreds level over time as the tenure of our teaching staff continues to move in that direction. And this slide has always been a point of pride for us here in Midland Public Schools. It compares our operational costs from an administrative and business standpoint and operations and maintenance standpoint in comparison to the state. And if you take a look at the business and administration ranking, we're 788 out of the 827 districts. That puts us in the 95% pile. In the operations and maintenance, we're at the 88, so it puts us right in that ranks. And that, for you as a Board of Education, lets you know that our operational and administration costs in comparison to other districts in the state is extremely efficient. And we will keep presenting that number to you over time and striving to keep it in that realm so we can make sure that our dollars are being diverted where we know that it makes the most impact, which is in the instructional and classroom setting. So shifting now to more of a current status, this is simply just a slide that I am repeating for you from our last budget presentation, our amendment. Our revenue and expenditure lines are listed there for you, but what you really cared about is where are we going to end up? We had predicted for you in this slide a 1.5% budget variance, which would put us in a deficit spending right in the mid-500,000s, 560,778 to be exact. That is predicated on a 1.5% variance. To balance the budget, we would have needed a 2.15% variance, and we are working diligently right now to monitor and see where we believe that we're going to come in at. And we've shared with FFO that we believe we are going to come in at balance, and we also believe that we might put a little bit of money away this year as well, too, because of some of the shifts in our revenues and expenditures. We'll continue to monitor that. It certainly would not be a bad thing to be able to add to our fund balance once again, to be able to help us further weather the storm that we know is coming for the next couple of fiscal years. I repeat this slide for you again from our last presentation as well, that shows when we were adding expenditures this year, that we were prioritizing it for student supports and classroom instruction, and also to help bolster our capital improvement fund as well, too. So now shifting into the future and looking at our predictions for 2020. I cannot reiterate for you again how important student enrollment is to us. We are again driven by that number, so we continue to monitor enrollment projections. Our enrollment projections right now in terms of our internal tracking is proving to be a little bit difficult because we know that our parents are not enrolling in the same way that they had done in the past. So we're pretty diligent in monitoring kindergarten enrollments, and that's something that we're going to have to remain on top of to make sure that we're getting all of those parents that are not used to the fashion that we're going to have to be able to do this over the summer. So we're going to stay on top of that. State and local funding and how that compares into the amount of dollars we're getting per student, that is going to remain a bit of a mystery for us as well, too. We had a prediction that I presented to FFO, and you'll see in a couple of slides here, I've revised that prediction, but we may have to revise it one more time based on what we hear out of the May consensus revenue estimating conference coming out in a couple of weeks. And then also, we have to predict what we're going to get in terms of our federal and state grants, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. In terms of expenditures, this is a reminder slide to you that we are a human capital business. 85% of our expenditures, it came in at 86% this year. It fluctuates a couple of percent, but it's always right in that range, are tied up in salaries and benefits. But we also do want to note on here that retirement is a big factor in this as well, too, and in terms of the costs that are offset by the state of Michigan. And that's something that we want to keep an eye on because that's one of the categories that we think that we could see cuts in from the state, and it could have an impact on our budgets. And of course, we adjust our staffing levels as well, too, based on what our enrollment trends are telling us and what we prioritize in terms of instruction. The other 15% are those that get a lot of attention, things such as textbooks, professional development, services that we purchase, fees and license, fuel, et cetera. We go through a lengthy process with all of the directors and department managers to try and estimate what these costs are going to be. We do analyze these very closely and make sure that we're spending in priority areas. But again, when it comes to the overall biggest influence on the budget, it is not our departments. It largely is our salary and benefits and correlating costs to that. So that's where a large amount of our predictive work is coming from for your 2020 budget. This slide is something that we had always hoped we could present to you and give you a degree of confidence behind what our prediction is going to be. I got a little bit excited in my first year in this role that about a month and a half, two months back, I had an executive budget already. So I filled in the columns and had it ready to go, and it really didn't look that terrible. There was a 1.5X formula that was given out as the first prediction, and we were looking at about $150 increase per student here in MPS. We didn't see a slight raise in our MITSR's rate, our retirement rates, but we felt that some of the categoricals were going to put us in a good position. And I was simply just waiting for the Senate and House to come along. And Bob Cooper had a great formula where he'd take the executive, the Senate, and the House, basically mush all three together and give you all a prediction. Well, then life changed a little bit for us. Everything got put on pause, and the executive proposal came out, we know, is not realistic at this point anymore. So I put it on here to let you know that in the future, when times are better, you can expect to see this similar chart hopefully filled out with a proposal from all three of the entities. But for this year, there are to be determines in what was in the executive branch. Probably just me showing off that I had this chart ready to go, but it doesn't really mean much of anything right now anymore. So in terms of revenues, I wanted to paint two pictures for you, predictions in our revenue streams for next year. On the left side of your slide, you're going to see what I had presented to FFO. I had mentioned before that we've already worked with our enrollment consultants, and his predictions and our internal predictions were actually within a couple of students of each other. We and our consultant are predicting a drop of around 65 students. That largely mirrors the exiting senior class with our capture of the kindergarten enrollment per birth rate and what we think the difference between those two numbers are. So we're predicting a drop of about 65 students. In terms of offsetting that decline, we would have needed an increase in foundation allowance of around $75 per student to offset that. So if we would have lost 65 students, gained $75 per student, and those predictions held true, we would have seen a net gain in revenue of around $7,760. The landscape has changed a little bit on us. Mr. Sharrow and I were on a webinar just before we joined this today, and we are thinking that at best, if we're lucky, we could probably plan on a flat foundation allowance, which would be a zero net increase. We're not sure that it's going to happen all there. There might be changes in categoricals as well, too. We're going to have to continue to monitor that. So I wanted to present this picture for you as well and show you that if we had a drop in 65 students and we had a zero net increase in our foundation allowance, you can see that we have a negative impact of around $560,000. That can fluctuate wildly. It could be worse than zero. We could see a negative increase, and we could see a student enrollment drop that's worse than 65 students. But it could be like this year where we don't see that drop of 65 and come in at zero or even higher. So you can see that there's large fluctuations in revenues that are really predicated on those two main drivers, enrollment and what our actual foundation allowance is. But don't forget about those categorical assumptions as well, too. Changes in the retirement rates can have impacts on us that number in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and those are things that we're going to have to continue to monitor. There are things that we do know, though, and that is shifts in our expenditures. And so I laid out a couple of these for you, and I wanted to paint for you a couple of pictures and give you some predictions and numbers that I hope are wrong, but I do want you to see a realistic picture of it. In terms of employee steps and salary increases and category and lane changes, we're pretty confident in those three lines that those are what we're looking at moving forward. They may be a little bit less because we have to take into account certain retirements of certain staff members, but those are fixed costs going forward that are pretty much contractually obligated to. In terms of medical costs, we estimated higher than we have in the past. That's an estimated 20% increase for our health insurance. And the line below it where you see the $73,000, that's 10% for our vision, dental, life, et cetera. We think 20% is high, but we don't know what impact that the current crisis is going to have on the cost of our medical insurance. We've been fortunate where we've only seen single percentage increases over the past couple of years. I certainly hope that's true again, but we do want to make sure that we're budgeting in these odd times for what we believe could be a worst-case scenario. So that number could move on us, and we're hoping that that moves down. And in terms of our balance, our budget request, those are departmental changes in terms of what we believe may be shifts in need for substitute teachers, technology needs, software needs, curricular needs, and those type of pieces. And that number will continue to fluctuate as we reprioritize and really start to dial in our revenues and our expenditures as well, too. So you can do the quick math in your head. Based on those current revenue projections or those dual revenue projections I gave you on the previous slide, we could see revenue increase of $500,000. We could see a decrease as well, too. But we do believe that we're going to have an increase in expenditures somewhere in that $3 to $3.4 million range. And again, that could change based on if we see categorical shifts as well, too, because this is built on a zero categorical assumption change that could shift on us as well, too. The variables are what I've been talking about with you, student enrollment, state and local funding. Those are our two biggest drivers and things that we're going to have to continue to watch. Medical costs, we won't know that true cost shift until we get late into the fall and closer to the winter. And we are also going to have to watch closely our variance as well, too. Those fund balance charts that I showed you back from before, when we build your predictions in your initial budget, know that those are built on the assumption that we will have a 1.5% variance in our budget. If we do come in at somewhere a little bit higher in the 2% to 3% or sometimes 4% range, then your basis of where your fund balance is going to be is going to shift. So that will have a swing as well, too. Once we get through the audit, we'll know that number, and we'll reset your budget, which you'll see at your January-ish amendment. And then the COVID-19 impact, both short and long. And then the COVID-19 impact, both short and long term, the light at the end of the tunnel is that all of the models that we've been seeing, there's some predictive models that have come out of U of M, is showing us somewhere in the neighborhood of around a two-year impact before things really start to turn. We hope that it's shorter than that, but we also do need to prepare and be positioned. It may also be a little bit longer than that as well, too. But we do think that there is a light at the end of the tunnel, but we do know that there's going to be a couple of tough years ahead of us. In terms of what's coming at you all next, to repeat what I said earlier, I will come to you again at June 8th, and I'll give you our first version of what we believe the 2020 budget is going to be. Then there's a period of a couple of weeks in between there for you all to really take a look at that, and we will bring it back on the 22nd for approval. On the 22nd, you'll have two approvals, the budget that we're presenting to you for the fiscal year 21, but also an amendment for our current fiscal year budget as well, too. We're going to keep fine tuning the revenues and expenditures on that to try and give you a closer picture, but we are also going to be a little bit cautious in that because we've heard certain rumors that there may be a negative supplemental budget coming from the state that may give us a preparation on this year's funds as well. We've heard from some legislators that that is going to be a last-case scenario, but we do want to make sure that from a budget standpoint that we're building some realistic numbers in there as well, too. So we're going to be a bit cautious in our predictions and our revenues and expenditures on that, which may lead to a little bit more significant variance once the audit comes in than where we have been previously. And then we'll also ask, like I said, for your official action on the 22nd for that final budget. I do want to end with a couple of things on it. There is no need to panic for us right now. I had an old mentor that used to tell me that panic is a sign of lack of preparation. And we are in a strong position to be able to weather this storm as a board. We don't have to panic and make cuts that don't make rational sense. We have the ability to weather this storm and to make strategic moves with our budget, always with the best interest of our students in mind. And so we are well-positioned as a district to be able to weather the storm. I'm not saying that it's not going to look a little bit different on your budget lines than you've been seeing the past three or four years. Prepare yourselves for that. But again, because of the fiscal responsibility of the district and the sacrifices and the great strategic moves that the district has made as a whole, we are positioned to be able to weather the storm much better than many other districts, but we do need to be very, very diligent in decisions that we're making, very strategic in decisions that we're making, to make sure that we're best positioned to service students for the long run. So we're going to keep watching things very close. We're going to make sure that we're making good wise decisions, and we'll keep FFO and the board apprised along the way. But it is going to look a little bit different than it has in the past because of these unprecedented times. But again, have confidence that there is no need to panic for us as a district. We're going to be able to get through this, and we're going to be able to keep offering a very quality education to our students, which I know is what the utmost mission of Midland Public Schools is. That's what I got.
All right. Thanks, Brian. And thank you to you and the whole administrative team for putting the district in this position and getting us set up to weather this very situation. One question that I had, and maybe there'll be others, with respect to the COVID variables, do we expect any significant effect on enrollment? That is to say, will people be afraid to return to school? Are they going to jump at the opportunity to get their kids out of the house? What are your feelings there?
So I'll take that question, Scott. So we've been prepping for that, and hopefully by now you respect that we're, we always look out in the future and try to be ahead of those trends. And so we are a little early to tell you exactly what we're going to have planned, but we are looking at MPS virtual options continuing into the next year. You know, we've been doing blended instruction at a limited level. Our teachers have been scaling up now with everything they're doing during this crisis, and we believe we're in a position to answer all parents' needs come August if there's still concern of sending their kids into the school buildings. We also know that we have screenings and different situations where we could do social distancing within our schools. So we've been preparing all those pieces along with our remediation plan for the fall. So we absolutely think that we can protect our enrollment as we go forward. We've been very proactive in enrollment. Brian said it well, you know, 7,200 to nearly 7,800, how we've done that is we've been very proactive. And from the day I arrived, you know, I mean, when it comes to school finances, Tom House is sitting here, he knows this as well as I do. There's two ways to fix finances in schools. It's reduce people and increase enrollment. And so that it's revenue, and revenue comes from enrollment or state, and you can't count on those pieces of it, and it's your cost, and eighty-five percent of your cost are people.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a question.
Hi, Pam.
Hey, Scott. Hey, so what if we start early? What if we add, say, 10 days to the beginning of school to bring students up to speed to reduce the gap before we start next year? Are we considering the cost of added salary for that to happen? Or how would we cover those expenses?
So remediation could be many, many things, Pam, and I don't want you to get too far out in front of yourself on that because that's a collective bargaining agreement piece. You cannot even come close to an August remediation without that portion of it. So we've broached the subject with association at this point, and I wouldn't plan too much further than that. And so to very broadly give you the scenario of August, what we'd think about is we would look at nine days, and it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and, but there's a lot of, lot of issues in doing that. Do you have staff that have made plans, some that moved spring forward? Do you have retirements? Do you have all your positions filled in time? But there's some component where we could do remediation in the fall full-scale, or we could do remediation for those kids that we determine have increased their gap. So a little more of a summer-style program. But we also could do remediation into the fall. So Penny and her team are working on that. We have a discussion with our Teachers Association on a Wednesday. They're open to some of those concepts. I'll only briefly say this because, you know, you don't want to talk, you're not allowed to talk too publicly about negotiated items, and so I can only say so much in a public meeting. But do recall that we've gave some increases to all of our employee groups, and we have not met on that with the teachers yet. And so that could be something we could talk about as well in there.
And Pam, one thing that we're monitoring closely as well, too, is some of the stimulus dollars that are coming along with this, the Federal Cares Act, as well as we're anticipating a higher-than-normal federal grant carryover due to some programs that aren't able to run currently. So anything that was planned for summer school that would have come out of this year for federal budgets, obviously that model's going to look a little bit different. So we have some different revenue streams that we could potentially tap for that, and I know that Penny and her team are working diligently on developing those models. And so as Mr. Shero said, as we continue to collective bargain, we've been mapping out many fiscal scenarios that we are going to analyze to try and make sure that we can provide the best remediation we possibly can and be fiscal responsible for.
You know, Pam, having been, having become an old gray-haired guy and have been through a couple of these downturns before, I don't want everyone to panic. We positioned ourselves very well for this. So back in the day when I had a 20% fund balance in another district, I used to tell everybody, well, you'll be broke before I am, and that's my goal, is not to be the last one in because then the state has to fix it or the federal government has to fix it. Our plan would be the same, but you still owe responsibility when you're doing a budget to do the best instruction you can for kids as we go. So I don't think there's anything we can do with the 1920 budget. The 2021 budget will look at where we can, being a little skinnier, but not full panic because we have a little rainy day fund. Now, all bets are off as we move through the 2021 and 2122 when the picture's clear. I don't, I think you can anticipate, and I did back, I was one of the first superintendents who said in '06, hey, just watch the auto industry, it's downturning, it's downturning, it's downturning, you better start saving now. It's a little out of time. I used to use the savings saying all the time, a little gravel out of everyone's driveway and no major hit anywhere. And that's, you know, when I got here, we didn't cut any single programs when we came to Midland Public Schools. We reduced and got skinny everywhere. That's the formula going forward.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. Any other comments or questions from the board before we, I think, adjourn for this meeting? Okay, hearing none. Now procedurally, Mike, before I move on, we adjourn and we just open right back up into our regular meeting, correct?
Yeah, we got to take a vote to close.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Motion, Pam. Support failed. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. We'll open it back up. And for those of us, those viewers who are just joining, welcome to our April 20th, 2020 regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. We have already recited the Pledge of Allegiance, so we are just going to go right into roll call. Mr. Roush.
President Farland.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Roush is here. Treasure Fidel.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blazy.
Here.
Member Lauterbach.
Here.
All seven.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go right to item six on the agenda. We all have one long agenda, right? There's not two separate ones? Okay. So we're on the same page. Okay. Item six is the consent agenda. Item 6.1 is approval of the minutes of the March 16, 2020 regular meeting and the April 9, 2020 special meeting. 6.2 is the administration recommends a renewal of the food service contract with Chartwells. 6.3 is the approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of February 2020, as listed in the check registers, in the amount of $7,73,000, $73,728. Item 6.4 is the approval of legal payments, as noted in the agenda. Any, I'm sorry, let's start with the motion. Motion to approve, please.
Okay. I'm going to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Support.
I'm sorry. Okay, so that was moved by Mary, support by Pam. Any discussions, questions? Hearing none. I'm sorry.
6.2 for the food service contract with Chartwells.
Brad.
Is it typical that we would have that in the consent agenda, or is that usually a standalone item? I know it has been pre-approved, and we have the documentation, but as a contract approval, should that be outside consent agenda, Scott?
So it's a renewal, Brad. So when we did the five-year contract, that would be outside of it, but our typical format here is it's just an annual renewal rolling forward. You do year by year from there on out. So this is regulated by MDE and the USDA as we go. But it really would be your preferences of that, but we, when you say, do we typically, yes, typically, we do the one-year renewals and the consent agenda.
My other question is, is with that, which is not part of this, but if we want to answer it later in the meeting, curious how their fees are tracking versus when we're in normal time?
Brian, if you're, you have that information, we'll answer. If not, it's been, so that is, again, regulated. So go ahead, Brian, if you want.
I guess I'd have to hear the question again, Brian. Could you repeat one more time?
The Chartwell fees, how's it trending?
Actually, revenues for us right now are up, and in terms of their costs relative to, I'd have to run those numbers on it. I can only speak from the revenue side right now, Brad. I'd have to look at the other numbers for you offline on this and get back to you. I do know the revenues are trending up because the volume of meals that we are serving is much higher than we typically are. Mike, repeat on the 138,000.
Yeah, 138,000 meals, which will definitely make revenues up, and you get a little higher add. But Brad, they've always, so a little history with Chartwells, have always brought you revenue above cost. All that revenue is yours. All meal costs are ours. Only can be spent in the cafeteria fund. It's very regulated because it's USDA funding. And same with the increase in meals. Each year, that has to be approved, not so much by you, by Michigan Department and through the USDA. They get a cost per meal, and I probably shouldn't know this better off the top of my head, but it's like .03 of a meal they serve, and that's their fees, and that's how their fees set. But since you raised the question, we'll put that together in your Friday letter and give you the detail of where it's been, where it's going, and that number, so we can keep you educated on that piece of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question, Brad. Thanks. Any other questions or discussions? Okay. All in favor of approving Mary's motion?
Hey, Scott?
Yes.
I think on Zoom meetings, we're supposed to do roll calls.
Oh, I didn't know that. Pam, where did you get that? I've never heard that.
Oh, really? Jeez, I've been reading, geez, I don't know if I read that in the MASB stuff coming out when they were talking about Zoom meetings and virtual stuff. It's just a way to make sure that everybody's voting. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, I don't think that you have to. I think that may have been the MASB recommendation on that. But you can obviously hear if there's a no or not, and then if there was multiple no's, then we probably could point out how many no's, how many yeses, which we typically do.
All right.
Okay. Thanks, Pam. Thanks, Mike. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that moves us to item seven. That is the Board of Education presentation to the board, 7.1. We're going to hear from performance contracting.
So we have brought this forward from FFO. It was a concept that I have done, experienced before in another district where I think we're in a position potentially to do that again here, where we could get some work done, pay for that work over time, and potentially offset the cost of that work with energy savings. So if you recall, in our bond, we have the, the, the teardown of State Street next door. State Street hosts the boiler for both of these buildings, and so we have costs that we have to, that was not in the bond to replace the HVAC equipment here in Administration Center, which is an end of life. So the cost proposal that we're going to present, or the proposal we're going to present to you is some LED lighting throughout the district to find energy savings that would help pay for that HVAC. And obviously, the HVAC equipment would be more energy efficient as well coming forward. So we've been working with SiteLogic, and we have Nelson and Tom and Greg with us, three of them who will take the lead and explain this to you. On the backside of this, if you recall, I've explained to you in a Friday letter and at FFO, there's like five sources of funding, bonding in the state, and this is one of them, and it is a bonding source that only requires board approval. So you would take on debt, you would pay that debt off with part of the energy savings going forward. We have been working on the backside with our financial consultant as well, and we will bring you what that looks like. I mean, Nelson has some broad categories, but we will need our financial consultant to weigh in and show you what that cost would be coming forward. So the presentation is here tonight. We could possibly bring this as fast as May back to you for approval if we have that, or it could be down the road. But I still think with our fund balance where it sits and with the need to find funds to get State Street down and redo the HVAC here, it makes some sense. The LED lighting probably makes sense as well. So I'm probably going to turn it over to Nelson. Is that who's going to take the lead here, Nelson?
Yes. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. So I'd like to share my screen. I might, okay, I don't need permission, so one second here. Let's see if this works. Can everybody see the screen all right?
Yes, we can see it, Nelson.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So first off, I'd like to thank everybody for your time. I know this is a little bit of a different way of delivering a presentation, which I don't think any of us are used to, so... So Brian, if I can do as well as you did, I think I will be pretty proud of myself. Um, I'd like to, uh, introduce Greg Arkwright, uh, he's on the call as well. He's the Director of Engineering for SiteLogic here in the Midwest. Uh, he has helped, uh, from a preliminary standpoint, um, just identify some opportunities for the district to reduce some energy costs, as well as Tom House, who is a retired superintendent. He's our education consultant. Uh, he, uh, his last full-time position was at, um, Harrison Schools. Uh, so feel free to ask any questions to them or to myself. With that, I'll get right into this. So just on the agenda for today, I'd like to introduce who SiteLogic is, give you a little bit of our program management overview, focus more so on the performance contracting aspect of, uh, the business, and then answer any questions that you may have. Uh, so SiteLogic is a national organization. Uh, we have over, um, 33 offices throughout the United States. We have over 700 employees. And we pretty, pretty much focus on, uh, K-12 schools, although we have other businesses that work with other, uh, entities. Uh, we have, we do pretty much 100% here in the Midwest in terms of education. Uh, we have over $1.5 billion in project history. And from a financial stability standpoint, we have over $400 million in bonding capacity. And so basically, our mission is, uh, we are a program management firm and we partner with public institutions to revitalize, optimize, and construct healthy, safe, and productive indoor environments. And, you know, looking at schools, that's exactly what you need, right? So what we do, we're a program manager, and what that means to the district is a little different than your traditional bid spec world. We have architects, engineers, construction managers, certified energy managers, uh, facility, facility analysts, commissioning agents, a host of different professional services in-house, all under one umbrella. And that's a little different than, like I said, your traditional, uh, bid spec world. And, and what that provides for your, for the district is a single source of accountability and responsibility from conception to completion. So we design the projects, we implement, we commission, and then we guarantee the savings moving forward. From a services standpoint, we start all of our projects with a plant, with planning, which we do a comprehensive facility assessment of all your facilities. Uh, this particular project is a little unique in that you've already, uh, gone through a 122 million dollar bond project, or are in the middle of, um, of construction on that. And so what we want to do is come in and enhance what's already being done and be able to identify other methods of savings to redirect the cost from the utility, what you're paying to the utility company, back into the classrooms Brian had alluded to earlier. Uh, from an implementation standpoint, uh, we are accountable to scope, uh, budget, and schedule. Uh, we've got an integrated and synergistic approach because we have the in-house architects, engineers, construction managers. We're able to ensure that what we design is, is constructable, which really results in, in lower, uh, change orders and contingencies to the district. And then beyond construction, so anything we implement from an energy cost-saving standpoint, we want to make sure that the district is able to, uh, realize and sustain those energy cost savings over time. And we've got, uh, something called data analytics, uh, where we, uh, develop algorithms to ensure that systems are operating correctly. It's kind of a recommissioning and ongoing retrocommissioning of your systems. And then the other side of that coin also is with the district the size of yours, and you've got quite a few assets district-wide. We do have a long-term facility maintenance planning tool, and I can show a little demonstration, uh, at a later time, but you'll see a little bit of a dashboard of what that looks like. So planning, really, when we look at facilities, we look at facilities in a circular, uh, model. It's not linear. You build a building, you've got the maintenance to go with it, you've got life cycles, uh, you've got expected useful lives. And so once you build a building, it's a continuous, ongoing process to ensure that you're maintaining the facilities and you know, you know, kind of when the, the useful life is for those facilities and for those assets. So, but first, we start with, um, with the visioning, uh, which is essentially identifying what your district's vision is, which sounds like you guys are doing a great job of that. But everything that we do is going to revolve around your vision and around your goals and objectives. From there, we go into the assessment of your facilities. We look at the physical needs, educational needs, functional needs. And again, this is a little bit of a hybrid because you've already addressed a lot of those needs with the bond project. But as, uh, Mike alluded to earlier, you've got an aging HVAC system at the Administration Building, uh, that is in need of replacement beyond its useful life. And so this provides a means to getting, getting that done with offsetting some of those costs. And you'll see, uh, once we get to the proposed, uh, recommended solutions, we always come up with options. We don't, it's not a one-size-fits-all in terms of the, uh, the different lighting solutions or the different heating, ventilation, air conditioning solutions. We want the district to be a part of that, um, part of that, uh, recommendation and, and that decision so that you understand not just what the upfront cost is for these items, but what the ongoing cost is from a lifecycle standpoint. And then again, just we, we come up with the consensus for what makes the most sense for the district. And so when we talk about, we'll focus more on physical needs, uh, we look at the quality of the environment, asset condition, and reliability, safety and security. We're gonna focus on energy optimization for this particular project. So that kind of gives you an idea of what SiteLogic does overall. And now I'm gonna dig in a little bit more in detail of what we're looking at doing specifically with your, uh, district. So what performance contracting really is, is redirecting funds that are being paid to the utility company, paid for replacement of parts, uh, lamps, ballasts, and those types of things, and, and redirecting those back into your facility, reinvesting in your own facility. And we do that through a reduction in operational costs. And, uh, the cost savings that we project are guaranteed. And so the district is rest assured that, yes, we will achieve these savings based on the calculations and the amount of data that we've gathered. The important piece is that we're transparent in how we, how we arrived at those savings. There are many different assumptions that come up when, when you're trying to develop these, uh, cost savings. And it's imperative that we understand your facilities, how they're operating, and we establish a solid baseline of your, of the operation of your facilities, your run hours of equipment, the number of students that you have, and those types of things that all come into play when you look at what your total cost is to operate a facility. And so this is a simplistic way of looking at, um, kind of performance contracting. Uh, here on the left, you'll see this is the existing facility energy operational maintenance costs. So this is where you are today. By implementing the energy cost savings measures, uh, this is what you would, uh, this is what your cost would reduce down to. You would fund that project, you would, you would basically finance it through a bond. Um, and then any excess savings would go back to the district. Well, it'll take, let's just say, in this particular case, 15 years for, uh, the savings to pay for the initial cost, initial investment cost for the district. Well, anything after that, once the bond is paid off, those, those savings drop back into the, into the district's general fund. Any questions so far? Okay. So that starts with, uh, a utility analysis of all your facilities' costs, right? So we're gonna look at, uh, electric costs, gas costs, and water costs. And what we'll do is we'll benchmark your energy use and cost, uh, versus other facilities, and then also against your own facilities. And now that doesn't tell us that we're going to be able to save exactly what another facility is saving. However, it does give us an idea, a target, and then from there, we know, okay, this is what you're spending. We think we can get here, how do we get there? This is just a quick snapshot, so this is the electric usage, which is KB2s per square foot. So this normalizes the electric usage throughout the district on a per-square-foot basis. And you can see, um, Adams Elementary is on the lower end, uh, around 10 KB2 per square foot. And as the buildings get a little larger, um, you're using a little bit more on a KB2 per square foot basis. And this, and again, this is where it's important, this is just a snapshot. This doesn't tell us if you have summer school in these buildings. This doesn't tell us if the buildings have air conditioning. This doesn't tell us if there are after-school activities that are occurring in these buildings. So again, this gives us a benchmark of where you are, and then now we have to start filling in the gaps and understanding where is that energy being used. So typically, when we look at master planning in general, we look at all the district's needs, uh, over a long-time horizon, and then we look at the, the constraints of funding. In this particular case, we're gonna be focused more on controls and energy management, mechanical system improvements specifically at the Administration Building, and then electrical system improvements, more specifically in terms of, uh, lighting upgrades. However, we are going to be looking district-wide for other, uh, opportunities to save energy that may not cost the district much money. We're always looking for that low-hanging fruit to help, uh, drive more savings into the cash flow, which we'll, we'll discuss here in a little bit. As I alluded to earlier, uh, it's really important that when we're calculating savings, we have a solid baseline. Because without a solid baseline, there's no assurance, other than, you know, with the energy guarantee, and we can talk through different ways of, of the guarantee and how to, how to guarantee the savings. But it's essential that we're not overstating the savings that the district is going to realize. And so this here just talks about, uh, will kind of walk us through, uh, how we gather that data to ensure that the guarantee is really more of an insurance policy, and that's something that you're depending on in order for you to feel confident that the savings are there. We want to make sure that as we go through this process, we have done enough investigation and dug very deep into your facilities and use and operation of the, the facilities that you're going to definitely achieve those savings. And so what that starts with is, we'll start, start here on the, uh, top-left corner. We'll deploy, uh, temperature sensors, uh, lighting loggers, and that's important because we want to know what the facility, uh, what the room temperatures are that you're maintaining. We want to know what the burn hours are in the classrooms, um, with, especially when it comes to lighting in the corridors and the gymnasiums. Because when you look at lighting a, as a, an example, and you look at how you calculate that savings, you, you essentially look at the burn hours, how often the lights are on, and then you look at the watt reduction, and then you do the math. So that's a little bit more simple, whereas like at the Administration Building, when you're touching a, a host of different systems, heating, ventilation, lighting, um, and those types of things, you're touching a larger percentage of your overall building load, electrical load in the building. Um, and, and, but it's also important in those other facilities where if you are looking at just lighting, we are looking at all of the different systems that, uh, the energy that's being used, um, it, you're able to, to kind of slice it up into different pieces of the pie to understand where is that energy being used. And once you understand that, then you understand, well, of these different pieces of the pie, where is it that we can save? So, once we deploy the, uh, the data loggers, uh, we'll analyze that information. We'll also use the district's control system to understand, uh, how systems are operating. And then we, 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 uh, evaluate that information. The other thing that we do is we take power readings of your systems, your lighting systems, uh, your motors. We'll look at, if you have variable frequency drives, we'll look at the different speeds that your systems operate at. And again, that's important because we have to establish a very solid baseline. We don't want to just assume how many watts, uh, a fixture, uh, uses. We'll go in and we'll take actual readings to help minimize the risk to the district and to help maximize the, um, accuracy of the information that we're gathering. And from there, we start to build, um, our energy model. And if we see discrepancies in the usage or discrepancies in the data that we've gathered, we'll go out and gather additional data so that we can, uh, we can tweak and, and get a better model for, for the district. And with all that information, that's how we calculate the energy savings. So we talked about, uh, you know, where is the energy being used? And so one of the things that we look at when we're evaluating the facilities is the indoor air quality. And this just shows an example of CO2 map, which is an indication of, uh, ventilation air in a space. Um, it's important to understand how much ventilation air is being brought into a space, uh, one from a student, uh, performance standpoint. Um, and then the other part of it too is if you're not bringing in enough outside air and you have to bring the, uh, amount of outside air that's being introduced to the space, if you need to increase that, that has a direct, uh, uh, result on your energy usage, right? So what we don't want to do is, is sacrifice indoor air quality for energy savings. And so that's why it's important for us to establish a baseline in terms of the CO2 levels and make sure that if they're not up to speed, up to where they should be, we bring that back to the district, and then we need to make a decision on how we address that. The other item we look at, uh, is when we look at the lighting throughout the, uh, district, is the lighting levels in the different spaces. Uh, we want to make sure that we, um, design to IES standards. So what we might find is some spaces are overlit, some spaces are underlit. And so we want to, um, design around, uh, those standards and make sure that if places, spaces are overlit, there's an opportunity to actually save, um, because you can reduce the light levels. If they're underlit, we'll have to increase those light levels, uh, per IES standards. The other thing that we will, we will look at, um, and we've worked with other districts in the past, is putting together either switching, um, switching opportunities or dimming opportunities to help better utilize, uh, the, the technology in the spaces like smart boards and those types of things. So that's something as we're doing our lighting audits, we would want to ensure we account for that and bring that forth, uh, to the district to make sure that the technology that's been purchased, um, the district has an opportunity to maximize that through those types of things. And so, you know, I talked a lot about data gathering, and ultimately, at the end of the day, this is what we want to get to for each facility. We want to understand how much of your load is due to lighting? How much of your load is due to fans and pumps? What are your base loads? What are your plug loads? What is your cooling? If we can't affect your base load or your plug loads, then we can't calculate any savings off this part of the pie, right? If we're looking at lighting improvements and we're looking at some controls improvements where we can reduce the cost or the usage of your fans and pumps, well, this is where we're gonna focus our attention. And that's why it's extremely important for us to understand how your facilities are operating. And so from a, um, energy savings standpoint, you know, we look at things like LED lighting. Uh, we look at things like energy management system, uh, recommissioning. We've, we've worked on projects where, you know, bond projects have been completed and maybe energy conservation wasn't at the top of the list or top of mind. We're able to identify opportunities just through retrocommissioning or adding variable frequency drives and those types of things that are lower-cost items that have a decent payback to help drive additional savings into the, uh, into the district's cash flow. Again, redirecting the costs from the utility company back into the classrooms. So I just want to touch real quick on, um, some, some future, some past results and kind of predicting future performance. Again, it's important that the district feels confident that they're working with the right partner and a partner that is able to meet the savings guarantee that, that, that they're guaranteeing. And so this is, uh, a project that's just completing construction. Uh, this is Westwood Heights Schools in the Flint area. Uh, the red bar here shows, uh, the baseline usage. Uh, the blue shows what the current usage is, and then the orange shows what the target usage is based on our energy, um, our guaranteed savings program. You can see, uh, right here is when construction started, and right when construction started, uh, we went in and started to optimize schedules and those types of things, just quick energy savings opportunities. I will, uh, commend Mike, uh, on his, um, what he's been doing with the district, uh, in terms of looking at utility rates and also just making sure that the, the buildings are operating on, on tight schedules. Um, so it, that does make the energy savings opportunities, uh, more challenging, but nonetheless, there's definite opportunity for the district, which you'll see. Um, but you can see here is when our lighting project was completed. And, um, we were already without touching the controls, other than just doing modifications to schedules. We were already pretty close to, to achieving the guaranteed savings that we said we would. And you can see, um, that's a pretty substantial reduction from where they were to where they are now, right? This is, uh, for that same project, this just shows, uh, what the gas savings. We installed a jockey boiler at their high school. They had two large old boilers, and, uh, the, the project couldn't fund a complete boiler replacement. So what we did is we supplemented their larger boilers with two smaller boilers that would really just, uh, provide heat during the shoulder months. Uh, the, the larger boilers would turn on to heat up the building in the morning, uh, for a morning warm-up, and then the jockey boilers pretty much carried the load throughout the rest of the day. And you can see, uh, a substantial decrease in gas cost, uh, for that month, when, the, the month this was operational. And the one thing I'll point out again, from a transparency standpoint, this month was about 15% milder than the previous year in November, but still a substantial reduction in, in cost, um, associated with the jockey boiler. Uh, this is another project, uh, that we had worked on, uh, Van Dyke Public Schools. And again, similar situation where you can see, um, six, uh, this, this is a four-year period, but you can see, um, the blue is the base year, and the, um, project was complete here in 2017 of October. And you can see that the, uh, the utility costs and consumption has reduced significantly. The other aspect that we'll be looking at is, uh, helping the district with getting rebates. Um, this is Westwood Heights. This is Westwood Heights, we had projected $202,000 in rebates, we were able to get them $280,000 in rebates. This was at Van Dyke Schools, we had projected $145,000 in rebates, we got them $269,000 in rebates. And naturally, the first question somebody might ask is, well, you know, how did you do so much better than what you had predicted? And there's, when you're working with the utility company, sometimes it depends on who is assigned to your project, and so you never want to be too aggressive in terms of what you're projecting from a rebate standpoint. But then at the same time, there's always a gray area, right? And so, an example would be temperature controls in a building. If you have existing temperature controls and you're putting in new controls, you may have to prove to the utility company that the existing controls are not working. So, we will always, from a contract standpoint, be conservative, but then we will always do whatever we can to maximize how much the district is able to get in terms of rebates. And we did that on both of these districts, just as an example. Sorry, I'm talking a lot. All right, so, what I'll be presenting here shortly with cash flows, these are preliminary budgets, all-in costs, which include, you know, contractor costs, our fees, our professional service fees, and they're really rough order of magnitude triangulated from three sources. RS means is a database that we utilize, utilizing local contractors as well, and then also any long-form estimating. And then we've got our own internal database, you know, with the over $100 million worth of projects we do on an annual basis. So, utilizing those resources, we're able to come up with, again, budgetary numbers at this point, until we decide to move forward with the district. So, again, not quotes, they're professional estimates, and you'll see we're providing good, better, and best options for the district to consider. This just shows the different sources of funding. Mike alluded to that a little bit earlier. You know, this falls under the legislation for shared savings energy programs. There is no shared savings in terms of, if we overdrive the savings, all that savings falls back into the district's pocket. We don't get any of that. Just wanted to clarify that because the name's a little bit misleading. So the sources of funding for this type of project, utility savings, operational savings, and utility rebates. So, again, you're not going back out to the constituents and saying, hey, we need a little bit more money. What we want to do is make your facilities more efficient, and you're essentially redirecting general fund dollars from paying the utility companies back into reinvesting into your own facilities. And as Mike mentioned earlier, we are not financial advisors, so we need to state this. However, we do understand school finance, and we'll just look at a few different scenarios, again, just from a high-level standpoint. So, hopefully you guys can see this okay. We looked at a couple different lighting options. One was a relamp and rebalaced, district-wide with new LED tubes. And this was feasible, especially with, you've got a lot of newer fixtures district-wide. I think there was a lighting project or lighting upgrades that were done in the early 2000s. The other thing we looked at, again, we always want to look at good, better, best options, was replacing LED, replacing the existing fluorescent fixtures with LED flat panels. That didn't have as attractive of a payback. And the goal here is to take as much of the energy savings and redirect it to funding the administration building HVAC project, right? So that was the main goal. So, then if you look at this third option here, we looked at lighting controls, classroom dimming, and occupancy sensors. Again, this is the utility savings associated with each facility improvement measure. There's operation and maintenance savings associated with that, and then this is the total savings. This column here shows the projected rebate for each line item, and then here is the simple payback. We looked at the lighting district-wide, and then we broke out the administration building separate, because at the administration building, in order for us to replace the HVAC system, we're going to be bringing ceilings down already. And so we looked at just putting new LED flat panels in, because you'd be putting in a new two-by-two or two-by-four ceiling at that point anyway. When we looked at the three different options for the HVAC system at the administration building, we looked at replacing the units and putting in DX cooling, which is essentially direct expansion air conditioning integrated into the rooftop unit. And then we looked at new VAV boxes, which are variable air volume, to provide individual control in the different spaces. New temperature controls, a new boiler plant, because right now, the heating system is heated from the State Street building. And then, we'd be relocating the IT server room, and so that would be included in this budget as well as new ceilings. The second option, which we looked at, is everything downstream of, everything upstream of the existing mixing boxes that the district has is sheet metal, everything downstream is fiber duct. And so, we wanted to provide the district with an option of replacing that fiber duct, since we're already up in the ceiling and we'll be touching that, right? So, if you're already touching, you're already getting up in the ceiling space, it may make sense to look at replacing that as well. And then the third option was, instead of utilizing a direct expansion coil inside the unit, we looked at what it would look like if we added a chiller instead of using DX. And so you can see, this is what the net cost looks like. And so we looked at three different scenarios. What you'll see here in E dot 1B is that we did not propose the new flat panels in any of the scenarios. Again, because of how new the fixtures are throughout the district, and it just provides a much better funding stream for the HVAC replacement at the administration building. Any questions on the scope? And so, I do want to clarify one thing. So this was preliminary, right? So, there may be other opportunities as we dig into the facilities. We're focused more on lighting and HVAC at the administration building right now, but we will, our goal will be to identify other energy conservation measures to help drive more savings into the cash flow. And so, this is a little bit of an eyesore, but what I want you to really kind of pay attention to is, this is what the capital investment would be for scenario one. $3,750,000. There'd be about $201,000 in rebates for a net investment of $3.5 million. And so, in the green, this is all the funding streams. The red is the finance costs. These three, this is the technical resource services, this is the measurement and verification cost for us to collect the bills and ensure that the district is saving what we said they were going to save. And then this here is the cumulative cash flow. And so a couple things I want to point out here. We talk again about being transparent and making sure that the district understands what assumptions are being made. And we want to minimize the assumptions, and the assumptions that are made, we want to make sure that the district is 100% comfortable with. So the one thing you'll notice here is that the utility savings are increasing every year. And what we utilize is a 3% escalation factor. The district thought 2% is more appropriate, we've seen 3% to 3.5% for electric. And obviously, we would work with the district on whatever the district is comfortable with, so that you can ensure that those, the savings will be there to cover the debt service. The other assumption that was made is the operational savings. And most of those operational savings are coming from not needing to replace light bulbs for the next 10 or 15 years with a 60,000 burn-hour LED lighting system, in addition to a reduction of operational costs for the HVAC system at the administration building. And so, again, those are things that we want to make sure that the district is comfortable with in terms of what those numbers look like. These do not include any labor savings, but material only. And then the third assumption I just want to point out is, the interest rate that we use is 2.5%. I can tell you, we just closed on a project at St. John's Public Schools, and they did a 15-year private placement bond, because the municipal market was just kind of going crazy at the time, and they wanted to close. We did a 15-year, and we were able to close at 1.36% for a $6.7 million project. So, when you look at this over 20 years, the district is looking at a positive cash flow of $583,598. If you look at it at the end of 15 years, which is essentially when the, you know, how long the financing would be for, you're looking at $917,000 negative cash flow. But the other way to look at that is, the district would be getting $3.75 million worth of improvements, and it would cost them $917,000 at the end of 15 years, and they'd be positive at the end of 20, assuming that the escalation factors would hold. Any questions on that? Okay? This is scenario two, so this includes replacing the fiber duct. Again, everything else is pretty much the same, except for the cost, savings don't change. And you're looking at, at the end of 20 years, about $373,384 positive cash flow. And if we look at scenario three, which includes a chiller, you're looking at $250,000 in positive cash flow. So, that kind of gives you the three scenarios. Obviously, no decisions have to be made. Even as we move forward, we will evaluate all three of the systems, all the different options, and bring forth whatever option is the best for the district, and we'll work with the district on making sure that we, the district selects the best system for their constituents and the district. All right, so real quick, we'll just kind of go through the implementation process. Like we mentioned, we've got project managers, commissioning agents, all in-house, so we would manage, we would essentially be, one way or another, the general contractor, all contracts, and a performance contract flow through SiteLogic, and so the district would have one contract with SiteLogic, and we would be responsible for all of the subs that are working on the project. And so, again, less finger pointing, we're responsible to the district, anything that comes up, it's on us to ensure that the district is satisfied. And with our approach, that typically results in a reduction in cost of 2% to 6% from what we've found. And then obviously, from a commissioning standpoint, especially when you look at, when you look at occupancy sensors, ensuring that you're using the right technology, right? You don't want to use the wrong technology of occupancy sensors and lights are turning on because an HVAC system turns on, or there's a little bit of movement from airflow. So, that's one important aspect. The other is the controls, especially at the administration building. We do a point-to-point checkout to make sure that the system is operating the way that it was intended to operate, and we put it through its sequences to ensure that the spaces will be comfortable. So that's definitely an important aspect of any construction project, in our opinion. And we talked a little bit about, you know, our integrated design and how we have continuous feedback from the design team to the construction team, which reduces costs, reduces change orders, and makes projects that much more buildable. And from a communication standpoint, as we're doing the implementation, we hold, you know, bi-weekly meetings. The district staff is welcome to be as involved, as much or as little as they want. All communication flows through us. We can provide dashboards to the district in terms of the progress of the construction project. I mean, we're very flexible in terms of providing transparency to the community. And you know, we always talk about results, not reasons. You know, hopefully what I've been able to convey today, tonight, is that we are very, we take a lot of pride in the work that we do, in doing our due diligence, in understanding how your facilities are operating. Our goal is to hit on our numbers, hit on the savings, really to give you peace of mind that systems are going to operate correctly, they're going to operate efficiently, they're going to operate in a sustainable fashion, and that you are proud, and we're proud of the work that's been done. And so from an accountability standpoint, we're always accountable to budget, schedule, and scope. And then from a beyond-construction standpoint, again, this is just a quick snapshot of SiteLogic, what we do. We've got a lot of professional, different professional services in-house. Really, we're able to manage facility life cycles from every different aspect of facilities. And then just future consideration, I think it would be imperative that we discuss the different guaranteed savings methodologies, where they make sense to do maybe more of a utility bill audit, guarantee versus just a stipulated. And again, that's where the transparency comes in, that it's important for the district, when you're working with the right partner, that that partner fully makes you aware of how savings are going to be guaranteed, how savings are going to be measured, both now and into the future. You know, kind of discuss if what we've presented so far today looks like it's attractive enough in terms of reducing the burden on the district's general fund to fund an HVAC project at the administration building, which has passed its useful life, so it's not a matter of if, but a matter of when. And so being able to reduce the burden on the general fund through identifying energy savings opportunities throughout the district. And then, our ability to be able to deploy our resources to continue the development process. Again, if the district wanted to move forward, that would be the next step for us. And then just understanding future meetings and timelines. So, you know, no decisions obviously we made today, but just things for the district to consider moving forward. And then, the last thing I just want to share is, so we'll be gathering all of the information throughout all the buildings, looking at all your different assets, understanding the functionality, and I think quite a few of those assets have been replaced, but a district your size, I'm sure there's going to be assets that need to be replaced. And so what we have is a long-term facility maintenance planning tool, which is a cloud-based database that takes all of your assets, looks at the one, five, and 10-year replacement based on lifecycle, and it's a living, breathing document for the district to be able to budget future replacement costs, not just something that sits in a binder, but every one to three to five years, you're able to see by school, by building, by system, whether it's flooring, whether it's ceilings, whether it's HVAC, whatever that looks like, and you're able to see what those costs look like on a building-by-building basis, on a system-by-system basis. And, you know, in a subsequent meeting, I'd be happy to show you kind of a dashboard on what that looks like and be able to play with that in real-time for a sample customer. But that's something that would be a service that's offered, it would be included, because we're already gathering all that information to come up with our facility assessment. So takeaways, why SiteLogic? You know, I believe we have a team that's very passionate about what we do. I know that we've done a tremendous job for districts in the past in meeting our savings, exceeding our savings. I know we take pride in providing schools and students with great learning environments. Our goal and our job is to make the people who hired us look good, like show that you're making great decisions. But again, we've got a passion for what we do, and we'd be thrilled to work with you and your district. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Al, can I have a question?
Yes.
You mentioned that for the St. John's project, they received 1.36% interest rate? Percentage interest rate?
Yes.
What's the interest rate now? And is it, you know, do you see, is it the lowest rates you've seen?
It is. So, they were projecting, so they actually are, the proceeds will be distributed at the end of this month, so this was very recent. They were initially, the board had voted on a municipal bond, they had specific language, so they had to go back to the board to revise that. Because of all the volatility in the municipal bond market, they were able to find a private placement partner and get an interest rate of 1.36%. Before that, we were, they were assuming about a 2% interest rate.
So Pam, we spoke with Paul Staudtner, who's our financial advisor, who's, I would, is the guru in the state, and there's many reasons why this project may be timely, because right now, you would get one of the best interest rates in history probably out on the market. And then the other one for us is, you've got a fund balance that's healthy, but taking, you know, a few million out of it to do just an HVAC system, and that gain energy efficiency with the LED, with what we're heading into the next couple of years, would be pretty hard to swallow. We're making smaller payments and gaining some energy savings across the district over time, which needs to make a lot of sense right now with what we're heading into the next two years. So, part of my thinking is, because we're in a healthy financial position, making a payment is not as risky going forward as well.
I'm wondering too, if you go ahead with this, would, for instance, the administration building be their hands tied to not being able to turn the heat up, say, past 60 degrees or something like that?
Yeah, no, so absolutely not. And that's a great question. So we don't want to compromise space comfort, occupant comfort for savings. So we will work with the district on whatever temperature guideline Uh, so we will work with the district on, uh, whatever, um, temperature guidelines that they have district-wide, and if they're, you know, if they're spread too far, if they're letting, you know, people crank their cooling down to 67, we'll probably have a discussion on what the potential savings looks like, if you bump that up to 70 or 71, as, as an example. Uh, but we will not dictate, we will make recommendations, but we want to make sure that the occupants have some sort of, um, flexibility in the space to be able to plus or minus three or four degrees.
We have.
Use the temperature, and we would, we would determine exactly what those, uh, dead bands are, um, and then we'll, we'll base our savings on those numbers.
We have policy on that, Pam, throughout the district.
All right, great. Nice presentation, a lot of information, it sounds like a good time to do this.
Thank you.
So if you, while you're thinking of questions, and my thought would be, um, we get, we need to get more information from the financial advisor, bring it back through FFO, um, continue that discussion with Nelson as well, FFO, and then potentially bring it back to the board. If that's May, or if that's June, uh, you know, I'm not sure, um, it matters too much. Um, and then the timing of the project going forward probably has a lot to do with occupancy and when we're in those type of projects, so, um, State Street's not coming down for a couple of years, so we have a little bit of time there as well. But just need, you know, feel the board, and do we want to continue to explore, I guess?
Yeah, and, and to that point, I think the critical thing, uh, from a, uh, data gathering standpoint, this will be a, a little bit different, uh, because you would have buildings, you know, so if we were to get into the buildings now, you've got buildings that are not occupied, the equipment is not running the way that it typically run, um, so we would want to make sure we work hand-in-hand with Mike, uh, on how the building did operate, put some energy models together, and then, uh, maybe push it out maybe a little bit, just to be able to see the operation of the facilities, look at CO2 measures and those types of things. Again, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the numbers that we are projecting, the district feels 100% confident and comfortable, and we feel confident and comfortable that we can achieve them.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good project, and definitely a good way to pay for what we have to do in terms of replacing the HVAC so that we can get State Street torn down. The, my only request for Nelson would be a little bit more work on the, the rebate for the HVAC on the admin building, and looking at those custom rebates through Consumers' Energy rather than just the standard, so.
So Nelson, who does the physical work of installing these, either the DX system, the chiller, or the lights or lamps and ballast?
So we've got a network of contractors that we've worked with successfully on implementing school projects, um, and so we would typically get, uh, pricing, competitive pricing from them, and, and work with the one that provides the best value for the district.
So those would be contractors not from this area, correct?
Uh, well, uh, that's, that's not the case. If, if the district would prefer to, um, for us to invite, uh, contractors from the area to be able to bid on our design, then we'd, we'd absolutely be open to that, uh, we don't have a problem with that. Uh, the only thing I would, I would say is, uh, we're, we're accountable at the end of the day to the district, so we would just want to make sure that whoever it is that we hire is going to be financially stable and has solid references for us to be able to deliver, uh, a solid project to the, to, to your district.
So I know you're in the early stages of this, when are you speculating that you're talking about State Street slash demolition of State Street and doing this work at the admin building?
So, so State Street's at the very end of the bond, and we're not in any hurry on that at all. So this is really getting us in a place to begin to look at that, Brad. So, um, we've housed Barton Mallow in that building, but we're going to move him over to central auditorium and shut that building off, um, the best we can at this point in time. So that, you know, we're looking, certainly not this summer, maybe the following summer of State Street. So we have a little time, um, and it could even be the third summer out, or, or winter when, when State Street's, it's probably the least important of the projects that we have going, since it doesn't affect students out there. But it is in the bond, and, um, we have to tackle the HVAC in this building. So that's why I kind of planned and brought, I've been struggling with the thought of, do I, do I take this large sump and bring you a bid just for the HVAC here? Uh, I remembered, it was my boss who started, um, a similar project, and then I inherited it in my previous district, and I remembered this process, and so we began to explore it. And, um, so it's really here for your, you guys' thought, but I think it's a creative way of making that all happen. I mean, I think Nelson would love to go right away, but I'm, I can't say that I'm in a race to do it, it's, you know, I think we need to start planning and figuring out how we're going to do that, so that's why I brought it with you.
And, and Brad, if I may, the, the other thing I think we would want to take into account is when we can do the construction at the administration building, because there will be a couple of weeks of downtime, um, and so the best time to not have, you know, heating and cooling would be during the shoulder months, where it's, it might be a little bit more bearable, because we're not going to be moving people outside of the building, unless that's what the district wants to do. So, you know, end of September, October, uh, there'll probably be about a two-week downtime, so we'll have to make sure that whenever this does get done, we're planning, you know, engineering time for, um, for submittals and those types of things, and then equipment, um, equipment, uh, procurement. Uh, so we'll want to make sure that that either happens, you know, in the fall or in the spring. Meanwhile, the, the work with the lighting can be done, it's all going to be done second shift anyway, district-wide. Um, and we'll get as much, you know, if this project were to go sooner rather than later, then we would get as much done in the summertime and during breaks as we could. Uh, but the critical thing is going to be the HVAC system at the administration building, so that we're not causing, uh, too much discomfort in terms of, uh, temperature control within the space. So that'll just be a planning coordination, uh, item.
So what's the overall fee for the service? How is that calculated?
So between all of our professional services and overhead and profit, we're right around 25% is typically where we're, where we're at. That includes, you know, everything from engineering, construction management, and then overhead and profit, so. And that would not be in addition to what I showed in the cash flow, that's, that's
Any other questions?
I don't think so, not, not right off, not off the top of my head.
I'm sure we'll have more as this progresses.
Yeah, and we'll, we're going to give you plenty of time to have that, so we'll bring them back. And Brad, I, I explained to him your background prior, so we knew that you had, would have some thoughts on this, so.
Okay.
Certainly going in there.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
All right, uh, that's gonna move us on, I think, to item, uh, 7.2. This is an action item for the eighth-grade Chromebook purchase, and that's going to be Brian.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, we're seeking your authorization tonight to purchase 625 Chromebooks, um, from Presidio Inc. of Wickson Michigan. Um, that's a cost of $263 each, which is broken out into $239 for the physical device and $24 for the one-time license. This purchase replaces PCs, laptops that were purchased in 2015, so we're reaching the end of the lifecycle for those laptops. Those are currently in eighth grade, so they've gotten some middle school use as well, too, um, which is a tough wear on these devices. So this is, this purchase would come out of Series 2 bonds and is from the statewide spot bid, so we are seeking your authorization tonight to move forward with that purchase. That's about a month ahead of our typical timeline on this, but we are worried a little bit about supply chain, and we'd like to be able to get that order in, in terms of hoping to have them here and ready to deploy for next school year.
Make a motion to approve item 7.2 for the purchase of the eighth-grade Chromebooks.
Support. Okay, motion by Phil, support by, I think it was John, um, any discussion on the Chromebooks? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey, sorry, I had a question there, but I.
Sure, Brad.
My iPad went on mute, I'm sorry. Um, do we have, um, a good backlog or a, a supply of, of Chromebooks at this point in time? Because right now, obviously, the, they're primarily all at home and being very heavily used at this point in time, and obviously, we've addressed it in some of our meetings, that, uh, damage, breakage, those types of things. Do we have, uh, a large, uh, inventory at this point in time? So that, I think you're going to see more and more damage as these things are being used.
I see that Mr. Dejic has popped on, and Dave, I appreciate you stepping in for this one, because you're probably best equipped to answer that.
Yeah, hi Brad, um, we have, uh, so, uh, we're going to do this. One second.
Dave, while, while you're doing that, I'll, I'll pop, pop a little bit on the question with Dave's adjustment. So Brad, we have also recently, um, reached out and been reached out to by Dow Chemical on our needs during this crisis, and so we have, um, a situation where we meet tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, back again with Dow, where they're looking at purchasing us a, a, a good fleet of backup loaners of Chromebooks as well. So that may be coming through some Dow funds, as well as hotspots and some other pieces of that as well, because we anticipated, as you, that we're probably going to see more damage, um, going forward, and we would like the loner idea versus, you know, repair on-site, get it back to you, component of that. Um, but we have been able to, and Dave will probably, you ready to jump, step in? We've been, we've had, um, work hours, and we have help break fix going on here, and Dave can explain some of that and where we stand right now.
So we, I don't know if you can hear me, um, we have, uh, I don't think we have hundreds of, of devices on hand, but we do have tens of devices on hand, um, that we can swap out. We've got staff working daily, we take, uh, calls Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, uh, physically from the community. Um, while we take the calls on the phone, Monday, Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:30, but on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we actually have physical office hours where people can drop off devices, be fixed. Uh, we've got pretty small backlog at this point, usually about 10 devices at a time. We've been done, doing a good job of keeping that cleaned up, and, um, we tend to get them turned around within two business days. We get them, if we get them in on Monday, we get them turned around for Wednesday. The big, uh, problem sometimes is Friday, because we don't have people here on the weekends. Sometimes it takes till the following Wednesday, but we try and get them done still same day if we can. So it's not too bad yet. We've actually been seeing less breakage right now, but I think that's just because we're seeing less reported breakage. I don't think it's probably less, it's probably going to be more like you suspect, we're just not hearing about it yet.
Okay.
So we're working through getting some more of those loaners. Worst-case scenario, let's say that there was a time lag in between there, uh, most of us, I'm working on a Chromebook right now and didn't, don't really need to, and so some of our devices could go, and we've done that once, but before in a crisis, where we put our devices into the students' hands as well.
Okay.
Good question, Brad, thanks. All right, um, we'll, we'll reset that, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-2-0, uh, just for clarity's sake. Next is item 7-3, this is, I think, information-only, and I apologize, I'm going back and forth between two screens here, uh, this is Midland High Flooring, Mr. Bruton.
Actually, we're going to ask for your approval tonight on this one as well.
Oh, okay.
This is an action item. Um, so yeah, we've accepted bids for vinyl tiling at Midland High School, and in your attachments, you saw a detailed map of the flooring areas to be covered by that, and we're seeking your approval tonight to issue a purchase order to the low bidder, superb flooring and design of Troy, Michigan, in the amount of $69,091 and 16 cents. This is from our Capital Projects Fund, and, um, looking for your approval so we can begin that work.
Make a motion to approve 7, 7.3 Midland High Flooring?
Support. Who, who is the support, I'm sorry?
Me, John.
Oh, John, I'm, you weren't, you weren't coming up on the screen, I, I apologize. Okay, motion Phil, support by John, um, any discussion?
Are they going to be able to get started before a normal date? Or are they, are we holding them to a later June date like we would normally have been in, in that situation, Mike?
So there's multiple pieces on this one, I wish I had Mike Mogulberg, he'd have the full day up details. So we're also got moisture issues, it, this is the bottom floor, Brad, at Midland High, and so right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, we're waiting on a bid for the, or did we settle that, the moisture?
Moisture mitigation.
Yeah, so moisture mitigation, we're still waiting on that component as well. We've, we brought to you the asbestos removal prior, the tile now, and moisture mitigation. Once we get that in, we believe it'll move quite quickly. Yes, many of our projects we're hoping to start, um, Barton Mallow's, um, you know, even jumping at me right now, because I have heard some rumors that they're going to be able to go May 1. I don't know if you've heard that, Brad, um, that May 1 was very limited, and a lot of safety protocol, um, school bond projects are going to be up and potentially back and running, so we hope we can get ahead of all these projects. We're trying to pull ahead, we'll pull the stadium ahead if we can as well, starting May 1.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that takes us to item number eight, any requests to address the board? Mike, anybody?
You have no one publicly, I don't see anybody that's been into the Zoom meeting except for our present presenter, so I think you're good there.
Great, thank you. Okay, item nine, administrative services, we have, uh, minutes from Brad.
Yes, uh, some Neola policy updates, uh, that we went through at our April 20th meeting, um, they are all listed out, uh, in the minutes or in the documents of the meeting, um, just various upgrades that we need to take care of.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is item 9.2, this is an action item, uh, board policy revisions.
So those are the ones that Brad just mentioned in the minutes, and they're listed there for you, and they were, uh, legal updates through the Neola policy that, that were requested.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve 9.2?
I move that, uh, the policy revisions described in item 9.2 be adopted.
Thank John.
Support.
Sound like Mary? Motion, motion by Lauterbach, support by Friedel, um, any discussion on item 9.2? None? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Okay, it takes us to item 10, 10.1. This is curriculum instruction and assessment, this is information-only textbooks, uh, for adoption. Penny.
Good evening, everyone, we do have two books for your, um, information this evening, they'll be available for the 28-day period of examination. They are available here at the admin building, right outside my office, and, uh, given our, our situation, if anyone has questions about those, they can certainly email me, and I'll make arrangements for them to preview those books. The two books, uh, the first one of the two is for Math 7, the title is Big Ideas Math: Modeling Real Life. This is, uh, the supplement, or the companion, rather, to the sixth-grade text that we adopted last year. So this is our next progression. This will be both a physical book as well as digital access. The second book is for our high school IB applications and interpretations, uh, this is mathematics, applications and interpretations for the IB diploma, and again, uh, 2019 copyright, and this will be both a printed, uh, physical textbook as well as the online version. We'll bring these back to you next month for, uh, hopefully for your approval.
Thank you, Penny. Any questions or comments before we move to 10.2? All right, I think you're up again.
I am, 10.2. Uh, this time of year, we typically bring you our staff and curriculum development proposals, and this year is no exception. We have 22 proposals of, uh, varying sizes, and these are being presented for information, again, for that 28-day public review period for input. I want to note a little bit differently this year, these proposals certainly reflect, uh, the focus that our district has right now through the curriculum and staff development process, through general fund monies. There are additional areas of focus that are supported through grants, and particular diversity, equity, and inclusion professional learning that will happen. Um, so I just want to make that distinction. Um, so I just want to make that distinction, although I believe when you really dig into these particular proposals, you'll see that there is an ongoing threat of equity, uh, in this work. So these proposals, um, really vary. I'll just draw your attention to a few in particular. Many of them are a continuation of standards alignment, um, or alignment for IB. One in particular that stands out is the MTSS proposal, or the multi-tiered systems of support proposal. We've talked with the CIA Committee a few times about our movement forward in creating true systems of support, and it's now needed more than ever, uh, with our, our physical school closure. When we bring students back, we're going to need to be able to meet their needs, so that proposal is particularly timely. I'll also point out that we're continuing to support the high reliability school work happening at Northeast. They recently earned Level Four distinction, and this will continue to move them forward. There are three, uh, that are more technology specific, a blended learning proposal, a Google Suite training, and continued work with Luminate, which is our data warehouse and assessment system. Also a powerful tool to help track student progress and identify needs. These three, um, are particularly poignant now, that, uh, we're working in a more digital format, so we look forward to, um, more opportunities for teachers. Uh, the final two I'll draw your attention to is Zello Training, for the sake of clarity. That is the next phase of Career Cruising, which is our career development and educational development planning software. Uh, so we'll be migrating to that new system, and this is to provide some training for counselors. And then finally, I'll draw your attention to a proposal for gifted and talented in our elementary. This proposal will provide resources for a team to explore the feasibility of an elementary gifted and talented program. Uh, so the total sum of these is, uh, just over two hundred thousand dollars. Again, these are from general funds. We know that there are complementary work happening with grant funds.
Okay, thank you very much. They all sound very relevant and equally necessary. Uh, does anybody have any, any comments or questions?
Could I offer one more point of clarity?
Of course.
Um, as a distinction, I want to note typically when the board, uh, considers these and, and comes back to approve them, um, we carry forward very specifically under the parameters of each proposal. This year, we just, for the sake of transparency, want to note that, um, we're not quite sure yet what the fall will bring. Mike mentioned that before. So we're asking for some inherent flexibility. We may not be able to accomplish all of these proposals. We may need to repurpose some of the time, energy, effort, and resources toward what our, uh, reentry plan will be for the fall. So please know that, that we're asking for flexibility with this approval when it comes back to you next month.
Of course, thank you very much.
Penny, one, one quick question I had was, can you speak to how many of the development proposals were staff, or how much of the funding is dedicated to a sub? Versus how much of this development will be done on non-instructional days?
Um, I can pull that for you and certainly email that out. I'll share that with Mike. I don't have that right at my fingertips, but I will share that over the last three years, we've made a real concerted effort to move away from, um, using guest teachers, and rather paying teachers for additional time to do some of this work. We try to minimize the impact on, uh, instructional time.
Perfect, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to item eleven, FF, I'm sorry, go ahead. Was there something?
No, I think somebody was just clearing his throat.
Okay. Alright, eleven point one, uh, we have study committee minutes from Mary.
Uh, on mute, um, we met on April sixth via Zoom. Um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Bruton discussed the following topics with committee. Um, the February financial, the twenty, twenty, twenty-one, uh, budget workshop, and the Chromebook, uh, purchase. We also looked at COVID nineteen impacts, construction timing, timelines, and potential budgetary impact of the COVID nineteen closure. Were discussed with the committee, and the next impactful meeting is, um, Monday, May fourth, at five o'clock.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, next up is item eleven point two. This is information. Uh, we have gifts totaling nine thousand seventy-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Mr. Bruton?
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it. So information only tonight. We have eleven different gifts, um, from eight different donors. They range all the way from uniforms from our booster clubs, to food service scholarships, and of course, we'll be acknowledging those with individual correspondence from the Board of Education. One note, uh, highlight to point out that is, um, an accolade to all those that have donated to our food service scholarships. We were able to, two weeks ago, wipe, um, all student debt completely from our ongoing lunches, so we do very much appreciate all those that have donated to that food service fund, and to be able to relieve any of our families from those obligations at this point in time. Um, and if I can move on to eleven three, sir?
Absolutely, thank you.
And then for information, actual physical gift items, we'd like to thank the MCEA for their book donations in honor of Board Appreciation Month, and also thank Mr. Kevin Clark for his donation of N ninety-five masks, to help keep our technology team safe when they're interacting with the public, uh, during device repair.
Fantastic. Any comments on eleven point two or three before we move on? Other than thank you very much, uh, to those donors for their generosity, um, as always, but especially during these, these trying times where it's, it's sometimes challenging to, to give. Um, okay, number twelve, we're at correspondence to and from the board. Uh, twelve point one is just information, letters to the Board of Education. Um, item thirteen is scheduled activities. That's information only. Uh, those are a list of our upcoming, uh, Board of Education meetings. Uh, next is item fourteen, study discussion. Are there any board members that have questions about tonight's presentations, uh, or any, seeking any points of clarification on any information that, that we've gathered this evening? Okay, uh, with that, I'm going to, I'm sorry, this one, yes?
Question?
Yes.
I don't know if it's gonna be in Mike's comments or not. I wonder if you could just give a brief overview of, um, spring sports and, and the overview of athletics, obviously, that it's been canceled, but what are all the parameters that go along with that?
Yes, so, um, MHSA has come out and canceled all, um, end of the winter seasons, um, tournaments were going on as well as spring sports. Um, right now, um, that's really all the guidance we've got from, I know they are in, this, they were at one point in discussion, Brad, about summer, but they've decided that also is not going to work. Um, playing some during the summer, and so now their focus has been on fall, and where will we stand in the fall, and what kind of safety protocols may there be in place if we come back? And, and, you know, the reality of it, what I'm hearing is, um, we potentially will have fall sports. There will be many screenings that will have to go on daily, and there's a good chance we're playing in front of, uh, parents only or no audience at all. That's the best I know at this time.
And then did we have an update for, uh, enter the sports fees? Those all-
Yes.
Been straightened?
They've been returned, and the sports fees have been returned, uh, based on the spring, um, payment fee. So all have, has been returned at this point in time.
Okay, then what are we doing with the payment of the coaches?
Coaches have been paid a percentage for their offseason work in the spring sports. Um, I believe it was forty percent for the head coach and thirty percent for the assistant coaches. Um,
Thirty twenty, Mike.
Thirty twenty, excuse me, and so, um-
That's gonna be paid out on May eighth.
And there was a calculation to that, Brian? You used a, uh, formula?
Yes, sir, um, when we, we did some math on it to really try and not make sure that we weren't making profits off this. Really what we were trying to do was to net, net break even on it all. Um, roughly, Brad, because my notes are across the room, um, there was roughly seventy-five thousand dollars in return spring athletic fees. And with the prorations, we were in that neighborhood, um, in terms of, um, expenditures that were not, um, given due to the coaches' proration. So, um, again, reiterating what Mike said on there, was thirty for varsity head, twenty for all sub-varsity, um, and assistants, and scheduled to pay out on May eighth. Um, push some further talks about what happened right now.
Okay.
Anything else, Brad?
Um, I guess, I'd just be curious to see what the formula is, uh, but I don't need that now.
Okay. Alright, well, with that, we'll turn it over to Mike.
So continuity of learning plan, week one is in the books, and we are starting on week two. Um, a couple of things to note on that. Uh, we were probably, uh, one of the first districts, if not the first district to start as early as net last Monday. We knew that. Um, we, we wanted to be out, we want to not lose instructional time with our students. We also knew that the plan, as required, will need amendments as you go forward. So the planet, the first week, week went very well. There are a few bumps and a few issues. And so we were, um, have met on those. We've worked with our teachers association, um, ongoing communication with principals, and a little bit of clarification will be released on Wednesday, um, to the community, um, around that continuity of learning plan. And we'll continue to mend tweak as, as, as we go, work through this process. Uh, we, we talked a little bit earlier about the need for remediation, or, you know, reteaching of the gaps in the time period that they missed. And so we were continuing to work on that plan. We think it's vital that we figure a plan out in order to do that as well. Um, the, the twenty twenty-one school year, we talked a little bit about what that may mean. Um, Brad mentioned sports, but certainly, um, the school year of, in the fall, has some questions as well. And so we try to stay ahead of those type of things, and we've explored a lot of different avenues with parents' comfort. Where does the governor stand? How much have we released? Do we, we also know that there's a likelihood round two of COVID will come again in the fall, or in the winter. And so we, we're, we're making those plans from our screening processes, um, which we already do with our employees. Can we expand those to students further? Um, when we bring more employees back, will our screening processes be efficient enough to be able to get that many employees through? There's the possibility where we're gonna have to social distance kids. Could that mean half classrooms and half days? So we don't bring all kids in? Does that mean half busloads? What is that going? And we are in the process of trying to explore every avenue we could think of that could be coming at us in the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, not knowing what's gonna come up, and where screening stands at that time. Uh, we follow the governor and the legislators regularly. We are fortunate to have some very good lobbyist groups that keep us informed and have those opportunities to listen into their thinking and where they stand at that point in time. Sometimes we, um, unlike the night, night that the governor announced that we were closed, um, she didn't give us much notice, we've been getting noticed at least an hour or so before public notices go out. So we, we have a little bit of information going forward. Class of twenty twenty graduation, we have a tentative date for July twenty-fourth that would work with the loons. And we say tentative, because we just still don't know where, what all that's gonna mean, and as the stages of the, uh, stay-at-home orders lifted, um, we do believe that, um, the stadium allows us to do several things, uh, in their open-air environment. We could potentially spread the kids out six to eight feet. We could also allow just parents in, and, and that stadium, spreading parents out, and, and a stadium that size would, um, allow good social distancing. We could do some screening as they come in the different exits. So we still think that's a good venue, and loons are willing to work with us, not knowing really what the minor league baseball season still is gonna look like as well for them. Um, we have to continue the business of preparing for next year, and so one of the things that we're, we're, um, finishing up is our staffing. We're, we're better positioned, we've been in a long time in developing our staffing. And, um, we are already in our hiring process. Several hires are already made, and we expect our teaching staff to be probably hired in the next few weeks for next school year, and not many districts can be out front doing that as well. We talked a little bit about capital improvement, construction projects. You've proved many of those. There are general fund as well as construction. They're all on delay. Um, we are ready to release that on May one, if that's true, that, um, some, some school projects are gonna be able to continue with small numbers, with some screening is what we're hearing. Uh, we will pull, the other one, that project that we'll pull ahead is the HVAC at Dow High. If that's true, um, we're gonna pull that project ahead and try to get that done earlier in the summer as well. Same with our custodial. We're trying to figure that one out, because, um, at this point, you know, we have a skeleton crew that comes in. We mark down what rooms we're in, they sanitize after we leave. Um, so we don't need a full custodial crew, and we are saving some money to do that, because that's a third-party contract. Um, we are debating, should we bring a full crew back and get ahead, or should we have the savings in May? So typically, we wouldn't do summer cleaning until June. Should we save the funds in May, particularly not knowing what's heading it, coming at us in the next couple budget cycles? So we're working with that as well. Quick update on food service. Um, one month in, we've delivered meals for one month. We are at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five meals. If you do the math on that, if we're allowed to, allowed to, um, deliver these through the end of June, we may hit four hundred thousand meals, almost a half million meals out in our community in that short period. And so hats off to our Chartwell staff producing and getting that many meals and delivering them out on the buses out in the community, so. Lot of good stuff going on in there as well. That's all I have for you. Nice, nice lengthy meeting, so we'll fin, finish up there, Scott.
Okay, alright, uh, thank you very much, Mike, and thank you to, to you and the entire staff. We know you guys are, are working tirelessly uh, to keep up with this situation. It is, as it evolves, and it, it seems to change daily. Um, so we, we appreciate all the hard work you and all of our volunteers are doing. Um, with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mary?
Support.
In support by Phil, thank you Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Please be safe.
Yep. Have a good night.